Like to call the, uh, meeting to order? Is that good enough, Scott?
Yep.
Alright, good, here we go. Okay. Yep, and we need the pledge of allegiance people?
Good, uh, good evening, everyone. We have, uh, uh, we have had a lot of snow days and canceled meetings, so we are super excited to have representatives from the BAKI school and from the high school to, uh, to do the pledge. So what we're going to do is have all of the BAKI students come right up here in front of the screen and then the high school students stand behind them. And I will take a moment to introduce them, we'll do the pledge, and then the BAKI students have a brief presentation for the school board. Uh, I just wanted to note that, um, we have, um, our three students from the high school are going into the military. Kaylee Diaz? Diaz? Reese Bassett? And Jacob, so it's Saikoski?
With France.
Come on, Jacob, help me out. Help us.
With France.
Saikoski? Yep, air, two Air Force and one Marine.
Marine Corps? No Army guys? I mean, you know, they're, they're the best. Navy, here's a twenty, there's a thirty year veteran of the Navy right there.
Alright, wait, uh, actually, if you guys could all turn this way, the flag, the flag's right here and lead us in the pledge.
Nice for you to turn around if you would.
Alright, guys, start us off, somebody.
................................................
Thank you. Thank you very much, high school students. The, uh, the, uh, elementary students are going to present about their kindness program at their school. Mr. Snyder or, uh, Ms. McCaskill?
Sure. Alright, so this school year, all of fourth grade at BAKI chose to read the book, Wonder. And we connected it to CARES, which is a big part of our BAKI community and how we can be looking out for others and always including others and choosing kind instead of choosing to be the right person. So, we were challenged to do random acts of kindness all throughout the school year. And Reese took it upon himself to start decorating kindness rocks. And we were secret agents one day, and Mr. Snyder can attest to this. We went around the school and hid a ton of rocks. And all these rocks are a reminder when you stop to look. They all have messages about kindness and quotes from the book, Wonder. And we have enough for everyone to leave with one, to put one in your office or in your classroom, in your car, in your house, somewhere that every time you see it, you can stop and take a second and remember to choose kind.
It was fun making the rocks because you get to choose your partner and you get to decorate it. And you get to put whatever you want on it, like to be kind and to be happy and be nice.
For our students, we have a certificate of appreciation. So, I will give these to Mr. Snyder and he'll hand them out to you, Alex. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I really appreciate it.
Motion on the minutes?
Nope.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the manifest is working its way around. I believe we have resignations?
We do. Resignations include, uh, Benjamin Haney, physical science teacher at the high school, and Elaine Hayes, a math teacher. I don't believe that, we just have to, we just have to accept, accept.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nominations?
We have, uh, two nominations. One is Samantha Churchill for the position of Special Education Case Manager. And, uh, the other is Julie Healy, Special Education Case Manager.
Both?
Second?
Amy Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Corey, I can see you there, I'm sorry.
We're good.
Super tennis report.
I had, uh, quite a bit of information shared with me from the schools that they wanted me to tell you about, so I'll try to summarize. Alright. Wanted to note that we, uh, Sandborne Regional High School has received a certificate of recognition. Um, they've been recognized the 2018 Council, National Council of Excellence for the exemplary record of leadership, service, and activities that serve and improve the school and community. The Honor Society inducted three new members. So, on April sixteenth, the current members of the National Honor Society included, uh, twelve new members from the class of 2019. The, uh, ceremony was emceed by chapter president Lauren.
Lansing.
Thank you, Lauren Lancy. And, um, that evening, members, uh, new inductees and attendants of the ceremony heard four honorary guest speak on the four pillars of the National Society. I'm just gonna read the names of the students that, uh, were inducted. Samantha Foley, Olivia Williams, Bridget Abney, Melissa Mullen, Lauren Anderson, Emma Donag- Dun- Dunigan?
Donigan.
Donigan, thank you. Molly Breslin, Jenek Luck, Samantha Keely, Olivia Boucher, Sophia Boucher, and Lucas Finke. Congratulations. Um, recently, uh, members delivered nearly one thousand donated books to the local elementary schools. So, uh, that's absolutely amazing. Now they're gearing up for volunteering for the Cycle the Sea Coast event held by the American Lung Association that ends, uh, in Portsmouth, New Hampshire on May sixth. It's a one-day, multi-route cycling event with twenty-five, fifty, or one hundred mile options to choose from if you wish to participate. And a hundred mile route loops through Fremont, Newton, and neighboring towns and ends with water views along the historic sea coast in New Hampshire. This is the second year that the Sandborne NHSA has volunteered for, uh, this event. In the high school, we had, uh, um, a number of students who inducted to the French Honor Society on April sixteenth. Bridget Abney, Isabel Giles, Erin Gillespie, Audrey LeBlanc, Sophia Mary Carriero, Rebecca Olson, and Avery Scully. And we also had the Spanish Honor Society, which included Sophia Boucher, Sierra Carey, Hannah Ellers, Madeline Galloway, Jacqueline Gentner, Alex George, Rachel Keely, Madison McManus, Mary Miller, Lauren Quin- Quintner?
Quinta.
Quinta. Um, Kiara Reel, Charlotte Se Royce, Erica Sroker, Eva Tavares, and Megan Welsh. I have got to practice my names, those are a lot of names. Which is great. So, uh, um, we've also had, uh, the Sandborne Senior, a Sandborne Senior won the Greater Haverhill Chamber of Commerce Resume Contest. And that would be our wonderful student representative on the school board. Thank you, Lauren. It's really important to recognize that this was a multi-community event and for one of our students to win this is a real honor for the school. So, I really appreciate records. Um, middle school students have been participating in PACE assessments and, uh, grade eight students will be participating in the New Hampshire statewide assessment system in the areas of math, reading, and writing the week of May fourteen to eighteen. Um, due to recent fundraising efforts, two sixth grade students, Jonah The Burge and Ryan Malin, will serve as principals for the day. Yes, I like that. That's really fun. Their team has created a schedule for them to follow that will give them a unique insight into the workings of the middle school. Um, the middle school student, uh, and teacher cast of Beauty and the Beast did an amazing job on April thirteenth and fourteenth. The show, uh, was another tremendous success and demonstrated the commitment and talent of all those involved. The sixth grade science teacher, Heather Bell, has encouraged her students to engage in enrichment opportunities known as the League of Extraordinary Scientists throughout the year. The culmination of these efforts will be a student exhibition of learning on May twenty-fifth. The students who've taken on the challenge will present their, uh, Ruby Goldberg creations to their peers and parents. More information will be shared with families as we get closer. Um, at BAKI school, there have been all kinds of exciting things going on. They've recently hosted a special tea to celebrate their volunteers. Just for the community to know, we are very grateful for volunteers and you don't have to be a parent to volunteer. Any community member could reach out to the school to volunteer and we will be reaching out to our community more in the fall to ask folks to come in and read with students. Um, the school has been a blue ribbon award-winning school for several years and they all recognize the difference that volunteers make each day. Thank you to each of you. Um, six staff members are serving as coaches and thirty students are participating in Girls on the Run. This is the sixth year BAKI students have participated in this program that aims to help every girl embrace who she is, define who she wants to be, rise to any challenge, and change the world. This is just an amazing opportunity because the girls learn, uh, important life lessons. They are also pushing themselves to run further and further each week, which ties in the, um, physical education component. In early June, they'll all be running statewide Girls on the Run sponsored five K with over one thousand participants from New Hampshire. Um, the third trimester parent-teacher conferences are happening over the next two weeks and interim reports will be sent home on Friday, May fourth. My favorite day of the year. It's the Star Wars holiday, May the fourth, do you recall? You didn't know that? So, at Memorial School, first grade students, uh, hatch chicks and ducks as part of their animal development unit. I, I remember first grade when we hatched our chickens to this day and it was really fun, so I'm so happy to hear about that. The students waited patiently through the incubation period and enjoyed watching them hatch. Local families took the chicks and ducks home to join their farms. We hosted a kindergarten orientation night and welcomed thirty families to Memorial for a tour and orientation to the building. The nurse, a bus company representative, a guidance counselor, and kindergarten teachers were all on hand to introduce parents to kindergarten and show them the beautiful building. Grades three, four, and five students have been finalizing their PACE assessments in the recent weeks. Grade three and four students will also be taking standardized testing through the New Hampshire statewide assessment system on May seventh to eighteen. The Memorial School third trimester progress reports will be sent home on May fourteen. So I have, uh, two more quick updates, one from the curriculum department because I asked them to give us an update of what's happening. There are several important accountability data dates that are fast approaching. Uh, the SEU office is busy collaborating with district leads and classroom teachers to collect scores as well as double-scored assessments for this year's PACE submission. Additionally, specific PACE subject areas are preparing body of work samples for submission. These materials will be delivered to measured progress on or before May twenty-fifth. At that time, attention will be redirected to preparing detailed data reports in the form of CSV files for all district students. These files consist of PACE scores, direct competency scores, as well as other data from the electronic gradebooks. And those materials are due at the New Hampshire Department of Education on or before June fifteen. And at this time, we are awaiting the release of the preliminary SAT data. In the business office, May first to June first is the open enrollment period for staff to make benefit elections for next fiscal year. All changes to health plans and reelection to participate in the Flex Spending Account must be submitted by June first and Diana Rooney will be holding benefit meetings at each of the schools to provide assistance and answer any questions. And for the board's knowledge, Diana Rooney is our HR person. She's doing a fantastic job in, in her new role this year. Um, and we're nearing the end of the current fiscal year and as a result, we're working on estimating the expected unreserved fund balance. Teacher contracts were issued on April sixth and reduced back on April twentieth. We're preparing to open next year's budget soon so the schools can begin planning supply purchases and of course, Michelle wrote out of next year's budget um, to, uh, to be delivered, uh, for the beginning of the new school. So that concludes the superintendent's report.
Oh, sorry, Corey.
Um, thank you very much for your report. Quick question on the kindergarten enrollment. How are those numbers looking in preliminary, that's far?
Uh, I haven't reas- I, those were students that were already enrolled, so they're pretty much right on track with our, uh, um, anticipation. I always like to be very careful about talking about kindergarten enrollments in May. Because we never, we never know what can happen with parents moving in and out.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Many reports?
Yes. Policy met tonight and our next meeting is on June sixth at five o'clock. Um, we're gonna be discussing some policies tonight, first and second read later on. And we discuss the policies that what you'll be seeing later on. We also, um, have an issue with our policy manual. It's woefully outdated. I mean, it's almost irreparable at this point. A lot of policies need to be changed or repealed and we're gonna work through the summer on that if we decide it. So it's not a matter of a few things here and there. There's a lot to do and that's what the School Board Association told us. So we'll be on that, but we're getting the most urgent things done first.
I, I just wanted to recognize Dr. Brown for the amount of work that she's put into rewriting policies lately. The J policies alone is a significant amount of work and we will be talking with you at the next couple of board meetings about getting those cleaned up so that we can spend a few days in the summer going through what the NHSBA sends us back to be prepared for a huge policy update in August and June. Uh, you know, the two meetings in August. That's our hopeful timeline, but when we get them back, there's so much change, um, that it takes some time to process them.
And there are a lot of policies that are obsolete. The School Board Association doesn't have sample language for it. They don't even have it in their archive. So, we're hoping we can sweep a lot of things out, maybe at one meeting?
Yep.
Rather than go over each and every item that we'll do it as a group.
You may get a little booklet with policies this summer to read and be prepared.
It'll be a fun summer. Yep. And EISA met tonight. I'll summarize what happened, but Tammy Mahoney is our new chair of the EISA committee. Um, and then she had to run to another committee meeting. So, I stayed on for the duration. The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met after a long dry spell, um, tonight. The last time we met was January, from four fifteen to five. Our next meeting is May sixteenth at five o'clock. And we discussed, um, a survey we had distributed. Uh, we asked the community to respond to a survey asking what qualities define a successful Sandborne graduate. We only had a hundred and forty respondents, which to me is a pretty low number, we agree.
It was actually one seventy.
One seventy?
Yep.
What did I say?
One forty.
Oh, sorry, one seventy. Um, but it's, it's a beginning set of indicators. And the, the respondents seemed to break into three groups, equally sized groups. One-third was very concerned about test scores and academic results. They were test score enthusiasts. Another group was very concerned about practical skills. You know, being able to manage a checking account, being able to do very basic life skills. And they were proponents of that. And these were not exclusive categories, but these were things people emphasized. And the third group wanted soft skills. They advocated for more soft skills, teamwork, um, empathy, community involvement. So we're gonna present the results of that survey at our next meeting, I think. And, uh...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, the first meeting in June was our goal.
First meeting in June and show you what we've got so far. We also discussed, um, tip, paths for students to take. And these are, um, accessible paths that students would have available to them as a Sandborne graduate. We don't like to have one path fit everyone because each student has his own goals in mind eventually when they graduate from high school. And we shouldn't emphasize only SAT scores, we agree to that. I mean, there are many ways to assess success in a high school graduate. So we're trying to have well-defined but unique paths that students can select from to demonstrate their skills and as a graduate. And we should have a pretty good, um, outline of how that looks eventually. We're going to have, um, some overarching skills we're looking for and then we're gonna map those into measurable outcomes, whether it's completing a college course or completing a certificate as a CTE major. And then we're gonna identify PUD scores for success. It has to be a minimum score. And then we're gonna look at different paths they can take after graduation. So, we're really excited about that. We wish we had it done sooner, but we're still working on it. So, that's all I've got.
Facilities?
Facilities, yeah, on May second. The president of the meeting, Pam Brown, Jim Baker, they just introduced their, uh, facilities director, Stephen Riley, and Allison Park. At the fourth, school board meeting, the board will officially, uh, make up for it. School board meeting. The board wrote a presentation about the demolition of the oil science and industrial arts building located on the seminary campus. The presentation included costs. The board then requested the facilities committee review bids for that project and recommend it to the company to do it. The facilities committee met on April fifteenth with a good floor bid. Our bid was quoted on the same staff's appearance. The business presented as three options. Option A is to demolish just a garage portion of the industrial arts building. The industrial arts building is a large, weight, wood structure that's on the seminary campus. Option B is to demolish the complete industrial access, including... And option C is to demolish A, B, plus the science building, which is the brick building located in the industrial arts buildings and spaces. The administration asked for all three because of course for the industrial arts building to be the second and it's being... As it's helped to improve the economic proof to request bids on the rest of ours and cause infotainment and negotiations on the land possibly involving resources. And as so, the brothers and sisters wanted to discuss the possibility of selling part of some of the... This information could be helpful in negotiations. And it'd be a part of the communist reality, be a different part of the... The administration asked for the... The lowest period was the Henry's demolition. And according to Steve Rowley, the district has previous positive experiences regarding... To qualify, each of the bidders had to sell their bonds to secure the work that they were contracting. So this, uh, is a bid, but what we haven't decided to do is... These bids have all had expiration dates and the bonds that have been released have been contracted by a specific date. And we do weigh the ways the local school board admitted these bids before expiration, so... And the bids would be, uh, no longer current and we have to determine... So, the, um, facilities committee authorized this when they were notified in the definition that if the work is awarded, they will get the contract and ask them to keep their bid open. And bond in place. The committee does recommend that any of the work is done and contract is completed. As part of this project to satisfy regulatory and safety requirements, the extent of any hazards waste itself should be determined. And the government should completely do not do the work unless any hazards waste on profit and profit and health. And the plan that needs to be required to be able to remove it in the state might be the demolition bid, scoping work for these to be done. Steve Rowley remains to the great degree of his scope of work, our bids are based on the same rules of law. The committee will need two boards to oversee this work. Those companies are the same sources, both of equal quality. The lowest bid was by RPF Environmental. The committee recommends the work loads of RPF environmental. The cost of this work is forty-seven hundred.
That's forty-seven hundred for what?
Scoping.
And to manage the, uh, big process to get quotes for the work. They have to put on a scope.
Actually, two parts. Thirty... The part that asks to be demolished is the garage portion. That's fifteen hundred.
The scope of work.
Yes. Chair it now, fifteen hundred, yes.
I can do it. Uh, the thirty-five hundred is for, is probably worth ten dollars. So the total cost because we need that information. Uh, it's forty-seven.
Has, um...
If I could, I would just like to emphasize because the terminology, I think, lends to some connotation that what we're talk- there are several buildings on the seminary campus. We are not talking about the seminary building at all. We are talking only about the... Science facility, which is a brick and wood structure.
And the science facilities, the... They're semi-industrial, at least, but obviously...
Yes.
Potential cost would be... For both to be, to be pressured and...
At that meeting, as I recall, um, Michelle mentioned that we don't have any funds set aside next year for capital improvements. So if we're going to do this work, we need to approve it for this fiscal year. Pretty important.
This fiscal year ends June third. But we can encumber if we sign contracts and elect, right? You want to explain that, or you want me to explain it? Because the people watching TV do, what's encumbrance? You want to explain it? Yeah?
Um, so encumbrance is a process of, of measuring or contractual binding and therefore, uh, you're in the corner to set funds aside out of the current budget.
So we're contracting with them this year. They're going to do the next, the work, we're talking fiscal year here, the next fiscal year, but where we contracted with them, the money doesn't disappear because any unfunded money, this is budget stuff, I don't want to bore people. And any unfunded money has to go back to the general fund to use the tax rate, the... So we're go- we, we're allowed to, if we have a signed contract, to put, to hold this money, I was gonna use it that way. To hold this money, so even though the work is done in the next fiscal year, it can be u- that money can be used to pay. So it doesn't expire and people saying we never funded it. So, it's, it's called encumbrance, you know? So, what I'm really bringing this up is that if we do do this, we'll have money. Don't worry about it. But I, I'm, I try to be cognizant of the people at home watching this who've never heard of encumbrances, you know? Any other comments or questions? Finance?
Finance.
That's me again.
We haven't had a meeting in quite a while. Uh, we have one tonight.
You want to report on the next meeting where it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
With Karen Lidle, Jamie Mahoney, myself, and Charles Franco. Uh, we're there, we heard the presentation from the, uh, audience people who are here tonight, uh, regarding the fiscal life for the past, uh, year. We were very thorough, included answering questions the committee had. And as I said, we'll be bringing them up later, I believe.
Questions? Public Relations?
Public Relations has not had a meeting, um, since our last board meeting, but I do have a couple updates on some of our relations-related things. Before I say that, um, the next Public Relations Committee meeting will be on June fourth at twelve forty-five in the SAU office. And once again, um, as a public relations chair, I encourage anybody who is interested in attending the meetings to be self-aware of public things. And public relations, we'd like to have some community members participating on the committee. Um, a couple things coming up, um, that the public is invited to and may not know about among the children in the school district is that there is a dance concert next Tuesday at eight o'clock and we have a mental dance concert here, it's a treat and it's great. The free entertainment is... The free entertainment in Kingston is hard to come by, eight o'clock, uh, sorry, six thirty PM on May eighth, which is next Tuesday. And following that, the following Tuesday on the fifteenth, a chorus concert at six thirty, which is also a real treat. Um, so those are a couple of great concerts to come and see what the children of Sanborn are doing.
Is that one also free?
Also free.
There we go.
Free is good, right? Um, and there was a wonderful letter in the Carriertown News today, um, in the opinion section. So I brought it with me, I ran home just long enough to get the mail today. And it was, uh, the title of the letter was Kingston seniors, meaning senior citizens, thank volunteers. And I'm just going to read a portion of this, if I may. Thank you also to the volunteers at the Ba Key School who treat us to a wonderful meal around the holidays. The choral group does a wonderful job singing Christmas choral while we enjoy our lunch. Brian Stack, principal of Sandborne Regional High School, and Tom Ambrose, superintendent, do appreciate and gave a special preview of the upcoming play to be performed at the school. Sandborne seniors, meaning twelfth graders, have helped seniors day once a year. They will come to your home and clean windows, yard work, et cetera. This is a big help for a lot of senior citizens in town that need help doing these types of chores. And then, um, this, uh, woman, Mrs. Clark, goes in there saying sincere thanks to all the volunteers who help make these opportunities and events available for the seniors of Kingston. So I just thought it was wonderful to see, um, a community member who truly is, um, really calling out and appreciating all of the wonderful service that's done by the students and staff at the school district, so wanted to share that.
Any comments, questions? Personnel?
No, that's me too. So personnel has also not met, however, we are meeting on Monday, the twenty first of May, that's in a couple of weeks, at twelve forty-five in the, uh...
With a conference room?
Conference room, well, outside.
Uh, Michelle, do you need a motion on that, um, for forty seven hundred dollars? For the, uh, scope of work?
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Sure. We don't, we don't, but if we do, we'll have it. Make a motion, forty seven hundred dollars for the scope of work? Any discussion? They hand this for one second, oh, okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. SST?
Have not met, sir. Meeting Monday.
The meeting Monday? Um, seminary discussions.
So we, I, I, we met on April tenth to discuss non-public related matters regarding the properties. And our next meeting is, uh, June twelfth.
Budget?
We'll be meeting tomorrow.
There we go. Any comments on any other committee meetings, or things you want to bring up as they pass, they now follow them? Lauren, how's the student council doing?
Great, um, we just got recognized as a national council excellence, which is super exciting. Um, we are one of four high schools in the state to receive this. We've been, we've had it for a couple of years running, and it's a really cool honor to have, to be recognized as a council of excellence. We are holding a plant sale on June second, I believe, um, to go, and we're splitting the proceeds between an determined hunger-related charity and the breast cancer charity, the name of is blanking me. Um, prom for high school students is on May twelfth at De Burrows in Haverhill. The juniors have been hard at work planning it. Uh, the drama club will be holding one last show for Women in War at the end of May for veterans, which is, which was their, um, very incredibly well-received fall play that they also received, they also, um, took to states for the New Hampshire Theater Festival.
Excuse me, Lauren, sorry. Do you have the date on that, Women in War?
Um, I can find it really quickly.
Couple of us older folks with the senior citizen luncheon on Mondays. And, what are you laughing at, Larry? Uh, and that's, I, I'm going to put...
Tammy, do you know what it is? It's the Wednesday and Thursday After Memorial.
Wednesday and Thursday After Memorial?
It's a really great show, if you guys haven't seen it.
Well, a lot of, a lot of us are veterans, um...
So that would be the tortuous, the third person.
Okay, at time here? Okay, we'll have time to get it to them.
Yeah, we'll have another meeting before then, I'll get you more details.
Okay, so, um, that's great, because we do have a lot, actually, the number of World War II veterans are there. And my mother-in-law was a nurse in World War II, so...
Yeah, um, I do know that at previous shows for senior citizens and veterans, it has been a very moving experience. It's a beautiful show.
Lauren and I will talk it up in the, Monday. Okay, um...
Yes.
Are you looking for plant donations for your plants now?
We are.
So that would be something, and so if anyone in your community, like me, who has lots of plants, who needs to be divided this time of year, uh, where would they drop them off and where would they get touched with?
Um, we, you, okay. We're dropping them off the night before, so that would be June first, um, from like three or so to six. And if you have any questions, you can contact student council advisor Holly Price, which is hprice@saush seventeen dot net.
So June first, after school, three to six, drop your plants off, are they getting dropped off, are they now by gym?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, and I think that might be on the website too.
It should be. If it isn't, it will be somewhere.
Okay.
That's it.
You think?
Okay.
Public comments? Nobody comes up till the first person starts, and then they, then they start coming up.
So I'm reading this on behalf of Nicole Ash, and in an effort to not be rude, I'm going to sneak right out to catch the Kingston versus Newton U-12 softball games, first game of the season, so I'm going to read for her and then I'm going to scoot out. Good evening, my name is Nicole Ash, and I have three children in the Sandborne Regional School District, middle school. I, like many parents in the district, have great concerns about our curriculum, specifically to the fact that we are teaching to the middle. Not only are we not meeting all of our students' needs, but we are not allowing them access to academic opportunities that would be extremely beneficial to the betterment of their curriculum. I will share a personal example of this. Last June, letters were mailed home to a select number of graduating sixth, or, yes, graduating sixth graders, offering them an opportunity to take an accelerated math class. My son, who had a constant three point nine GPA for math, did not receive a letter. I spoke with the administration on why, and although he did meet the GPA requirement, he did not meet the requirement needed for his NWA score. He missed the NWA requirement by just a few points, but there were about ten to fifteen other students who also fell short, shortly below the NWA requirement. So to just move my son would not be an option, as others who scored closer to the requirement were not being...
I interrupt you for one moment, um, and I'm sorry to do this, but we try to stick up, we try to keep our public comments as something that's on the agenda. And we have no knowledge of this. I'm going to ask you, if you could, to send that information to the superintendent, because I, because, I'm, I'm sorry to do this to you. But I, I'm unaware of, of the letter, I'm unaware of any of this, so...
Sure.
We don't know what we could do, because we don't know anything about it.
Okay.
And, and we did make a, a ruling a number of months ago, that public comment will be on the agenda. Um, and, and I don't want you to think we're trying to hide this somewhere or whatever, um, but we have no knowledge, so we don't even know how to discuss this, if we feel it should be, we, we know nothing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And, and if that, if you could send that, then the superintendent could report to us, and then we might even put it on the agenda, be more than happy to have people come in and say, hey, we didn't know about this, please give us more.
Okay, so as...
I mean, is that, I don't want you to think that we're trying to slight you in any way, is that okay with you?
Well, I was just sent this because she can't be here, so I, on behalf. So I guess moving forward, maybe it's best to address, if a parent does have a concern and wants to stand here to talk, as nerve-wracking as it could be, what would be the process for them to come here and bring their concerns forward? How soon do they notify the board that they'd like to put something on the agenda?
Right, yeah, and, and we, we have, we do have a process, believe it or not. Um, it starts with, with actually, I don't know what you, you haven't gone deep enough for me to make a comment, but usually the procedure is, if something like this, a letter went out. So that must have come from the principal or something of that nature. So you would start with the principal and say, you know, what's going on here, you know? If you don't get a satisfactory from them, if they don't help you out, you feel comfortable with their answer, then you go to the next level. You can ultimately go all the way to us. Hopefully, we can solve your problem at the lowest level and still solve your problem. You follow me? I would suggest, because this is, this, this, because this has been made here, get in touch with you, is, I'm sorry...
Yeah, I just...
I was kind of circumventing, if I could see why I'm doing that.
No, no, we're, look, we want to address any concern that anyone has. But there is a process for addressing concerns, and I think it's wonderful that the community hear this again, so that it's reiterated, because it is very nerve-wracking to stand where you are and share concerns. So the, the process is that everything needs to be resolved at the lowest level. So it starts with the building principle. If it can't be resolved with the building principle, then it comes to me. If it can't be resolved with me, then it goes to the board chair and myself. And then he and I decide if it goes on the agenda with consultation with the board.
Okay.
So, so the, the public comment is supposed to be for matters under consideration by the board tonight. Um, we can't, it, it, the board has no, they won't be able to do anything, it's not a publicly noticed item. And, and so, um, it just needs to follow the correct procedure.
There's, there's two reasons why we did this. One, the, the, the public needs to know what's on here. If your comments, or if that was on the agenda, people may say, oh, I want to go to that, because I want to know about that.
Right.
Right? So that's why we try to keep it to the agenda, right?
Okay.
The other thing is, it keeps us with the process, and it, it restricts or eliminates, or we don't have people coming up, well, I want to not talk about this, well, I want to talk about this. So we had to have a process where we put it on the agenda. I can assure you, and I don't think, because anybody here will disagree, that you will be heard, and it will be addressed. Um, I can't guarantee it'll be to your satisfaction, because I don't know how it'll be addressed. But I assure you, this is definitely going to be looked into. Uh, anybody want to comment from the school board on this?
Really encouraging, I want, the only thing that I would say, I, I agree with everything you've said, and I feel for you, you being a lady to someone else who... Um, I, I would say, also, you have to be very careful about getting specific, like, from our school board. So, again, a general comment, we do committee updates, right? So Pam is the, no, you are now, Tammy is now the chair of the excellence and student achievement committee. So a more general comment about, I have concerns perhaps about, you know, teaching to the middle versus a differentiation, I'd love for the excellence and student achievement committee to delve into this further, um, would be appropriate, whereas getting too far into a particular situation is not. Do you see what I'm saying? Um, so that's, that's, is that, is that a fair characterization?
It could go there, or it comes straight to the board if the matter is very concerning. I mean, there certainly are instances where I've received information where it did need to go straight to the board and be based on...
Now, I will tell you, even though I gave you the process, I kind of circumvented the principal maybe. I'll tell you why I did that.
If I continued, the...
Just, just, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, because this is May, and you said in June. So we don't have a lot of time to maybe fix this problem. So I said, you know what, we're going to go right to go, do not collect two hundred.
No problem, yep.
All right? Can, can you see my light, because I, I'm concerned enough with what you've already said, that we need to address this ASAP. Is, is, are you, do you feel comfortable with that? I don't, I don't want to have you feel that, you know, the big bad wolf just shutting you down, you know?
If we're speaking on public comment, I will say that there hopefully could be more notice to parents who have concerns as to what the process is, because I think this is a pretty clear reflection that many of us don't know that that's how this works.
So we have shared that information publicly many times this year.
We have, yeah, you know, um, and, and that's okay. I mean, you, you know, there's always one that doesn't get, doesn't get the message, you know?
I will put that in my constant contact update to help you. Please give your feedback, so I'll actually help process and share it out, uh, next week on Friday.
Great.
And that goes to three thousand five hundred people. So that will help.
And did you hear that somebody just left you?
I was going to ask the same question.
Yes.
Great.
Great, well, thank you.
I'm sorry, I hope we didn't embarrass you in any way here.
Uh, no, not at all, it's a deal for her.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, and could you have a comment? All right, I'd love to.
Well, it'd be good, it'd be a good, good first initiation of contact, yeah. Okay, oh, any other public comment?
Yes, good evening. Piggybacking off of the, citing an opportunity for the excellence and student achievement. And Mr. Ambrose has mentioned, uh, the Army Society, uh, activities, which is all wonderful. I get, as many people in the community do, pop into the beginning of the year. And I enjoy seeing all that goes on and, um, things to celebrate. And I couldn't help but notice with the, both the National Army Society and the foreign language Army Society, that, um, there are very few young men, um, I'm not sure if they can qualify or if they can apply, but perhaps there's an opportunity for the excellence and student achievement to address this, or for the administrators. If you look at the National Army Society, there were twelve new recruits, one of which was a young man. If you look at the French Army Society, there were seven new members, zero were young men. If you look at the Spanish, there were fourteen total, one of which was a young man. So I see that as an opportunity maybe to engage or challenge, um, or find some way to incentivize them to participate, and celebrate all that they're, they're doing. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Tammy Gluck from Newton, and, um, I just wanted to make, make a comment about, um, the process here and addressing the board with concerns for parents. I know that this is something that was changed at the beginning of the year. I'm aware of it, because I've been to a few meetings, but I think, again, um, it needs to be more transparent on what the procedure is. So not just a constant contact, I think the, the procedure needs to be right there on the website for people to see. So, um, that's my suggestion. And that parent was addressing academic concerns about the challenge of the curriculum. You're a school board, everything should be about the curriculum. So, or you should be listening to concerns about the curriculum as a school board. You make policy, so maybe you didn't want to hear the details of the specifics with a letter and a principal, et cetera, et cetera, but the overarching concerns about the curriculum is something that I think with, um, curriculum committees, ESA, you, you really need to maybe give parents more of an opportunity to, to share their concerns in this meeting. That's my two cents.
I, I just, I don't usually address public concern, but I'm going to, because I want to be clear that we have had a number of public committee meetings this year with ISA about student achievement, and no parents have ever showed up, and we would love for them to come. So please come, I send them out every week in my constant contact and invite them with the agendas, every other week. And we would love that. So to say that we aren't welcoming it is not true. We welcome it, and we invited it.
I'm not saying you're not welcoming, I'm saying it's not welcome here at, at this school board meeting. So that's, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of this process, because I think it shuts down the, the community's freedom to feel to come and share with you as a school board member. I understand why, I get it, but I, I just, I'm not a fan of it, so that's my...
You're going to have an organization, you have to have an organization.
Yeah, yeah, you do.
That's why we have this organization.
Yeah.
It's organized. Anybody can call, get on the agenda. Doesn't hurt, just, you know, I'd like to be on the agenda tonight, because I was just... Absolutely. We set the agenda every, every, every Thursday.
A week in advance.
Right.
Before. Just give us a call, we'll be on the agenda. We'll open to everybody.
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
Right, it's not an open, you can't put anything on the agenda.
Again, we don't usually comment on these things, but we can't have people come... Again, we don't usually comment on these things, but we can't have people coming in as legitimate as their concerns are and saying, "Okay, I want to talk about this tonight." There may be other people out there who also want to talk about this. So we want, make, we don't want to be discussing it again next week with another group. Let's get in here, get it taken care of. This, this concern, whoever it's from, no matter, is definitely going to be addressed. They're going right to the superintendent on this. He just gave his phone number and said, "Call tomorrow so we can have a meeting on this." Then we will have discussions on this for the whole board. Otherwise, we sit here, and I would tell you, we don't usually comment because, not the rule, but it's pretty much what we usually do. People say, and we do not respond. Because that's how the system has been since there were school boards. Our lack of response doesn't mean we're not interested.
I know that, I know that.
So, you know, this is, this, what she was talking about was very, very important to me. And I want to make sure it's done right. And that's what we're trying to do here, because this...
And, and it's important if there's other parents that have similar concerns, they have an opportunity to come forward too.
That is exactly...
That is critical, that's very important.
That's exactly right.
So I agree.
We only discuss what's on the agenda for that reason.
So I have some more comments about things that were on the agenda. I, I'd like to just, I was reading through the minutes, and I understand there is a second reading, I think, of a policy about, or a discussion about Narcan in the school. I just would like to say that I work for the Exeter School District. I'm in a little, little school within Exeter School District, Exeter Adult Ed. We have maybe, I don't know, 100 students. We have it. So it's really important whether it says one student, community member that comes into an event, I support that being in our school district. I have the survey from ESA that Dr. Brown reported on. I know it's a small sample, there's 170 responses, but that's direct community input. People took time to write that, to respond, to give their concerns. I really hope the committee and the board takes that into consideration when you're making decisions about the concerns that the community brought forward. We don't... It's nice to have a statistically accurate sample, but we don't always have a statistically accurate sample of people who vote either when it's voting time in the middle of a snowstorm. So I just hope that we, as a district, you use that information. And then lastly, I have a question. I haven't been over to the Swayze Gym since, like, January. I'm wondering whatever happened with the, and this is a budget issue for the school year, the repair on the handicap access in the bathroom there. So...
The repair left, that was completed?
Yeah. That was done a couple months ago.
Perhaps you could call me if you have questions on that. I'm not prepared to respond to anything on that this evening.
It's installed and functioning.
Okay, so the project is complete? Yeah.
Hello, Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. I have four things. One, I would like to just endorse the recommendation by the previous speaker to put the information on the website for each school for parents so they know what the process is if they have complaints or concerns, what the chain of command is. I think that's really important because they don't all read the minutes. Sorry to tell you, but (laugh) as riveting as they are. So I think that's something that's really important for people to know so that there is no hard feeling or feeling that they are not being heard. Also, in regards to the last meeting, the board voted overwhelmingly that the resource officer at the high school should be armed. And I was wondering if that information had been communicated to parents and students. Thirdly, the seminary negotiation was on the agenda tonight. We haven't heard much from that, mostly that things are being done in non-public. And I'm just concerned that the district seems to be moving forward and proposing things such as demolition of buildings and leasing parts of buildings that are on that seminary campus that I believe are part of the negotiation, but I don't know because we have very little information. So I was wondering when we might get some information. I understand that there are some things that you can't disclose, but is there any information that you can give us? Even just, you know, how is it going? Is it going well? You know, that would be really, I think, important for the public to know, especially the people who live in Kingston. And lastly, I had a question about the budget that was, that was approved by the voters, which included the elimination of teaching positions. I believe that this is the time of year, April and May, when contracts go out to teachers. And I was wondering if, as was hoped, that those positions would be eliminated through attrition. How that is going? What is the status? If, if those positions cannot be accommodated by attrition, is the board going to act and have to lay off some teachers to meet that proposal that was in the budget? Thank you.
I'll comment on one thing. So until we get all that back, we don't know who's going to say yes or saying not saying. We've got, I mean, I have to sign one of them. So I've just signed, I don't know, three or four hundred signatures. But once, once we get the final product, we'll be able to...
Ms. Roderick?
Yeah, Cory, what do you got?
In light of the conversation that we just heard about, and I totally agree with you, I think it's with the right stance and motion. I'm working as a person on the Public Relations Subcommittee. I think I would like to share that I'm down here doing some work with state agencies and public agencies in carrying a message of student outcomes, school boards, and you. And everything that I just heard, we're encapsulating under why school boards matters, why accountability matters, and why the community matters. And I look forward to bringing that message back to our boards and back to our teams. And I think this will be a very good opportunity for us to nip in the bud of that very question and comment that we just all kind of felt uneasy about. So thank very much to Ms. Ash and others who spoke, but I also applaud you for taking the right stance because that is a message that we've...
I'm sure a lot of people just said, "I'm voting for that guy if he wants to do it." But any... Okay. Any other public comment?
The process is process, we got to stick with the process.
Well, the 20th is when all the contracts will be... Well, I was thinking in June because you don't have a meeting. There's going to be three months next week. As soon as we know, we...
Right, that's what I'm just trying to clarify.
But I, I guess, you know, my thought process was a little different because I know last year we got contracts, and then for the next... Even though they were due on the 20th, I was still signing contracts into May. Because although it's nice to say, "Everybody contracts on the 20th", I probably had another 10 or 15 after that, you know? So my mindset was on, even though the 20th, we got them, we really probably got them all. You know, Diana would be the one to go there. My mindset was somewhere else and it didn't change.
So I, I'm, I actually, I really want to be careful about our stadium having a strong public comment.
Yes.
Having said that, the question is asked, and I feel like I can relatively answer it. We had seven, seven positions. If I were not prepared to answer it, I wouldn't, but I will because I think it's good for public knowledge. We had seven positions that were reduced in the budget last year for this next coming year, for 1819. So far, we have taken care of all of the positions by attrition except for one. And we are still working on that one. So we have, we, we may have one individual who will be laid off from there, but we are trying very, very hard not to do that. That's where we're at, pretty good. You know, the reality is, is it's, as I said to everyone, you know, in the budget process, I was more comfortable with six than seven, and it's that seven one that's been tricky. And it's a lot of money. So we're taking it slow and we're trying to do it really right. The fact that Pete was alluding to is that we have a lot of people resign right now. So we're kind of waiting to see who might go to another district if it creates an opening that can support where we're at. So we're really working hard to do that.
We get resignations right up the office.
All the time. And honestly, we're entering into the busiest seasons of transfers and reservations, really are May and June, so...
This is the second reading of the emergency first aid care with Narcan added to the language. And I had a few questions at our last meeting, and some of them had to do with liability for the district, for example. So I researched some of the districts with a Narcan policy and cut and paste from their policies and add some of the language to our current draft. And Nurse Scanlon met with us at our last meeting, policy meeting, was great. She was helpful and had a lot of suggestions for us. So the policy changes that we're adding to the second draft are in red. And the section up here that comes from Oyster River School District's policy regarding Narcan and indicates that emergency medical care and first aid in general will be provided to school staff and, and we added "and" visitors because we thought that was important to include in the language in case we have a school event where you have an adult that has an emergency. So I liked that visitor section, and I added that to our draft. And then I was also concerned about liability for our employees because this is an emergency measure, it doesn't always come out as hoped. And there is actual RSA regulation that protects people who act in good faith in emergencies. So rather than actually cut and paste that language since it does change over time, we decided to add, "School health personnel will act in good faith and with reasonable care as required by law." And that's pretty much taken from the RSA itself. And we deleted practice, licensed practical nurse, since we have a school nurse and we could do the school physician because we don't have one, and someone might think we do if we leave it in the policy and be looking for that person, and gosh, we don't have one. So Nurse Scanlon said to strike that. There's the reference to an opioid antagonist, which covers Narcan now. And then down in here, I took this from Raymond School District. They've adopted their policy in September 2016, which specifies how we store Narcan, that we're authorized to purchase Narcan. It will be available during a regular scheduled school day and may be available at other times such as, you know, the density evening and so forth at the discretion of the superintendent. It will be clearly marked and stored, and law enforcement will be notified if it's utilized. And any records contained, contained to the administration of the medication will be maintained by the school nurse, and she'll follow all protocols. So this is just additional language. And again, this came from Raymond School District's language. And we also have some additional legal references down here. I asked Nurse Scanlon for Mr. Mason about outreach after the fact. If we do have such an incident happen, are there resources that are available to our students? And of course, we have SOROC, which is Southern Rocky Mountain County College for Helping Youth, located in the high school to help kids with substance abuse programs, education, and recovery. So we have a ready resource right here in the high school if we should have such an event. And it's only for students, it's not for visitors, just for the students that are enrolled in our schools. So let me see. If I could get a motion to approve... Oh, I'll add one more thing. Narcan is sold over the counter. Okay, it's not something you prescribe in most US states. So I would imagine that most of our major events, sporting events, and drum, I'll bet at least two people have Narcan in their purses at our meetings or at our major events. But having said that, we really need a policy in place. There's nothing in here about a parental waiver because it is an emergency situation. And every school district notes that there is no prior notification or consent form that parents fill out. It's that kind of situation. So we dispense with that issue. But again, we noted that if there were any questions about the policy, they could direct them to the superintendent.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
I'd like to comment or compliment Dr. Brown on the incredible job she did.
I also wanted to just say that, that for the public who asked about this policy in the public comment, this policy has been a great collaborative effort between the board and the nurse and the student who drafted this policy and did a fantastic job. So I just, we took it slow and did it right. We even asked for input from multiple stakeholders.
Nurse Scanlon is awesome. Got her go-bag ready to go. And I wish she were my neighbor.
Hey, Michelle, the hazardous waste removal will be a place for it. I'm going to give you the personal plan, make sure it's ten days before. I don't want to be shutting police down.
This is really sort of work in progress as the vendor, RPF, who's got the specifications to block kids and we don't have quotes to give them.
And this is strictly the hazardous waste.
This is strictly...
This is lead, asbestos.
I'll also mention, because this ties into the, the, there's certain things that are public. There was a bond, there was a vote for us to go into negotiations or enter into negotiations with the Seacoast Learning Collaborative. There's also been...
For what?
Oh, to lease a building on the seminary.
The brick one?
Not the brick one. Well, yeah, the, the science building.
This is where this confusion is.
It's messy.
Having taught there...
Thank you.
The old folks, the English Science Wing is the brick section. Everything we've been talking about so far is the wooden structure that used to be the industrial arts, the shop and the automotive. That wooden structure that anybody that wants, has nothing to do on Sunday, drive in back of it and see the wood falling off the building and see the building separated from the brick. So we're talking about the wooden structure attached to the brick structure.
That's right.
And the Seacoast Learning Collaborative is discussing with us, but of course, it's, can't talk about a lot of this because it's negotiations and things. They have had some interest in leasing the brick section, just the science section, I believe, where the double doors were to the English section. Anybody who went there? Just outside my old classroom, folks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Roderick. We have had a little bit of accidental confusion because even just now, when you said brick building, I thought of the seminary building. It's hard, it's a complicated campus. But I, I just want everyone to know that all the players involved are fully aware of everything that's going on on all the different sides. So to come up in public comment, I feel comfortable addressing it because this is on the agenda about this. The thing is, is that if the Seacoast Learning Collaborative does rent the building and renovates it, we want to collaborate, you know, independently with them to mitigate the hazardous waste so that we can save costs by doing everything all at once, if it happens, right? And just so folks know, the committee discussing the potential sale of the entire property that the town of Kingston is aware as needed. So as not to impede the negotiations with Seacoast Learning Collaborative or the negotiations with the town of Kingston. How's that Larry? Did I get it?
We did it.
All right, I almost just said Larry, do you want to handle this? But I think it's, Larry's on the committee and as is Dr. Brown. We are working really hard to carefully move forward to mitigate the likelihood of any unnecessary costs.
Last thing that I'd like to say. I hope people seeing the confusion here get a flavor of why we don't put some of this stuff out there. Because we haven't got it set yet.
Right.
And if we're done with the political season, so Facebook hasn't been too bad. But the way little pieces of information get multiplied is interesting to see. So once we get everything gelled and it's an appropriate time to let you know we will. But as you see, we have two possible interests in the place. We've got hazardous ways, we got buildings falling off buildings. So to try to get that out to the people and say, and by the way, this is what we're going to do, would be very, very difficult. So once we get it gelled, we'll keep you informed. I'm very proud of this board. We really keep you informed. Granted, there's things going on we don't, but it's for good reason. Okay, so, enough there. Okay, so Michelle, are we happy with what we've got? And we have completed that. We are moving forward to the safety committee, sir.
Ah, the safety committee. I just wanted to give an update and Michelle, feel free to correct me if I misspeak. But I spoke with Officer Rick. The hardware has been ordered for the board's approval at our last meeting. And he has passed the first part of the physical examination that he has to do to be certified to carry a weapon. And that has occurred and we are on track for, as soon as he can take the next step and I will notify the board when that occurs. There's one more examination requiring shooting.
And for those of you who are just tuning in and didn't see the last ones. This is not a permanent ongoing thing. The safety, every year, we are going to be addressing this before school starts. We know who we've got as a safety officer now, I believe he's a thirty year veteran. At least, he's on the Kingston Police Department for many, many years. And the safety officer here, former Marine, very good rapport with the students. So we take a lot of things into consideration. But I don't want people to think that it's going to be an automatic, every year automatically get someone. We feel very comfortable with this particular person. And those are the things, some of the things we're going to address every beginning of school year. So those of you who are anxious as I am, former police officers myself, about having a weapon in school, we're aware of that too. We're doing the best we can with the best information we had. Look at the last school board meeting, look at the minutes, everyone here had something to say. To me, one of the toughest decisions. Okay, now we're under new business. Is Heidi here? Heidi, if it's all right with you ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to have Heidi go first. She's got the youth risk data. There's no reason for her to have to sit here for the next perhaps half hour before she can leave to go home, right? You got here this morning about what, seven, six thirty? Yeah, okay. We're going to need a microphone probably.
So while we're waiting for the technical support here, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Heidi Levitt, I'm the Director of Counseling. And with me I have Amanda Feeney, who is our Student Assistance Counselor here at the high school. So we want to first thank everybody for having us and allowing us to present the data. And so our purpose for tonight is, Mr. Ambrose has been doing a great job about getting around to everybody and talking with folks. Students and staff and community members about what is the culture in the community of Sanborn Regional High School. And we thought it would be important for us to, that's it. Give some data, these are the statistics from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which our students, eighty-four percent of our students took last spring. So it was spring of twenty seventeen. And the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is a survey that looks at the six behaviors that are most likely to lead to either death or end disability. So these behaviors are behaviors that contribute to, and I apologize for just reading, but I'm going to, so I get them right. It's behaviors that contribute to unintentional injury and violence, sexual behaviors, alcohol and drug use, tobacco use, an unhealthy diet and inadequate physical activity. And so before we kind of went into our school's specific data, we wanted to give you some of the national and state trends. So that you could kind of have a perspective of where our school, how our school compares to the nation, the national data as well as the state data. So I'll turn it over to Amanda.
Hi, so like Heidi said, we just wanted to give you guys a little bit of, just to kind of set the tone of what the US and what the state of New Hampshire is kind of like. Versus just kind of focusing on us. So marijuana use is up and the perception of risk is down. I don't think that that should be too surprising, especially with the legalization kind of sweeping throughout the country. It's significantly increased in two thousand seventeen and researchers don't really think it's going to go down anytime soon. As of the last US YRBS, one in seventeen seniors reported daily use of marijuana. And also in both the New Hampshire and our data, it shows that the perception of risk is way down. And also what students perceive that their parents and their friends think the level of risk is. So I thought that was a pretty interesting trend that we're probably going to see over the next couple of years as we see how that plays out. Alcohol continues to be the most widely used substance among teens across the United States, the state of New Hampshire, as well as here. Cigarette use is down. And I think that has a lot to do with the amount of money that went into the advertising. And a lot of the different campaigns that they've done, that they've worked really hard on over the last couple of years. However, with that said, now we have this lovely thing called vaping, which has blown up throughout the country. And it's introducing a new era of nicotine users. And a lot of the kids don't really think that it's very harmful. And I think that we're going to kind of have to start from the beginning of where we were with cigarette use with that. In addition to that, they're also vaping marijuana out of it as well. And that's becoming an increasingly popular trend, which kind of opens up another era there too. Thankfully, vicodin and Oxycontin use is on a downward trend. We still are definitely dealing with an opioid epidemic here throughout the country. I was really happy to hear that we're trying to get Narcan in the school. I think that that's really important, not just for our students, but for the family and the community. And also I just kind of want to throw out there that as a Student Assistance Counselor, like I'm also an available support person for the community and the students who are at school. If we ever need to use Narcan at all. And kind of the overall idea is that most drug uses, it's below the peak levels that it was years ago. It's still definitely a problem. It's still, I think it's always going to have its waves, but we're kind of going in the right direction, which is good.
Kind of before we go on, if we can just, we'll definitely open to questions, but if we can just kind of wait till we get to the end for the questions. And our data is not, we're not doing the data to scare anybody or to kind of talk poorly about the community. We just wanted everyone to be aware of the issues that our kids are facing. So that everyone can kind of work together to support the kids as they go through these things. So according to the US and the state data, about thirty percent of our students report feeling sad or hopeless. And if you think, if you look at that from a clinical sense, that's thirty percent of our students would meet the criteria for a diagnosis of clinical depression. So the numbers in red are the national data and the numbers in orange are the state data. We're going to get into the New Hampshire data in a little bit. But as you can see, mental health is certainly something that we see here at Sanborn High School that our kids are struggling with. The numbers are definitely increasing. And we certainly see it as being one of the obstacles to a student's success in high school. The numbers are alarming, but we're not the only school that's dealing with that. So, I mean, as though, although our percentages of use of drugs and alcohol continue to remain high. With the exception of, higher than average with the exception of the marijuana and alcohol use. Our percentages of use and ease of access have been trending downward. And their mental health continues to be equal to or higher than state averages. Over the past ten years, we've definitely seen an increase in that. As I said, many of our local communities are struggling with that as well. Something that we also see and we'll get more into the data around this is the trauma that our students have experienced. We've had a number of losses in our community and our students are definitely reeling from that. As well as the substance abuse that's in the home and loss of parents and poverty that some of our students are facing. The good news is that our staff and teachers and faculty administration are actively working towards helping support our kids. Becoming more educated around what they can do to support our kids. Attending workshops, bringing in speakers, so that we know how we can best help our kids to access school. We know our number one goal is to get them through high school and to get them to graduate. But we also want them to be successful students and people when they leave here. A good thing is that over the past ten years, we've seen a consistent yearly increase in the number of students who feel that they are important and that they matter in their community, which is nice to hear.
So we didn't necessarily want to just read off the statistics, but more just kind of go over some of like the trends and what we're seeing. It's no secret that in the state of New Hampshire that we've been facing an opioid and drug and alcohol epidemic over the last few years. And our community is not like the other communities in the state and we've been dealing with it as well. Although the community as a whole has started making strides to support one another through this, it does continue to be a concern among our youth. So up here, the purple represents, the purple represents the Sanborn data and the green represents the state data. So although you can see that we do kind of remain higher than the state average, our rates are starting to go down. And that's a great trend that we have been seeing. And I also just wanted to kind of throw out that, that the YRBS, although it has shown to have a good representation of what is true among the communities in the US and in New Hampshire. Only eighty-five percent of our students answered the survey. Also, within a small sample of just using Sanborn, you know, one or two students not taking it seriously could like throw off the number a little bit. So that's just something I kind of want everyone to kind of keep in mind. And right on our survey data, it also talks about how they calculate the state and the US data differently because they have so much information compared to just using like our subpopulation. So it does say, just to be kind of aware that like, it might seem a little bit more alarming, but like these numbers aren't a true representation of the comparison between the state and Sanborn. I just think that that's kind of important as we kind of look through this. So as you can see, you know, the use of methamphetamines, ecstasy, synthetic marijuana, prescription drugs, they're all starting to go downwards. I think the prescription drug one is where we saw the biggest decline over the last few years. And I think that that has to do with the amount of loss that everyone in the state of New Hampshire has been kind of facing. And one of the questions that they asked talks about like what your perception of harm is. And that dramatically increased ten percent this year. That kids really saw that as a very harmful drug of choice and that they're seeing the impacts of it. So as we kind of said in the overview, students are reporting a decrease in ease of access in a lot of different substances. And they're also reporting a decrease of substances being sold on school grounds. So I think that that has a lot to do with some of the different ways that we've been kind of dealing with discipline and the culture of our school and all that kind of stuff. So similar to the national and the state trends, alcohol use continues to be our highest used substance. Remained kind of consistent over the years, about thirty-seven percent. I think that that just has to do a lot with adolescent development as well. And so like I said, that's the number that was kind of for the state of New Hampshire as well as for the US. Marijuana use has remained around thirty percent. And it doesn't look like it's going to be decreasing in the near future due to factors such as legalization. And kind of the conversation around it is changing. And people don't necessarily see, have the perception of risk of harm. And so I think that we're going to kind of see that kind of go up and down for a little bit. Similar to the US data, I said, the cigarette use is down, but vaping is a new trend and it's exploded in popularity over the past year or two. At the time of this survey, nearly fifty percent of students reported that they have tried a vape product. I wouldn't be surprised if that's probably higher when we take the survey again next year. Some other risk factors, just to kind of know. Almost nine percent of our students reported having a parent or adult family member who has been in jail in the past year when they took the survey. That's a pretty significant portion of our school populations, of the ones who just took the survey. And about, a little over thirty percent reported that they had lived with a parent or an adult who had a drug or alcohol problem. And I just think that those are some things to kind of keep in mind as well. And while the percentage is increasing, only fifty-three percent of students are reporting that they had a conversation with their parent or guardian the last year around the game of the drugs and alcohol. And I definitely, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just have to make one point. You send a student, everybody who's selling a drug or alcohol, thirty percent is two hundred.
Yeah.
Thirty percent. And I can tell you that is very difficult for the council to handle.
And I wouldn't be surprised if, and I mean, that's as adults, so that could also include if you're living with an aunt or an uncle or an older sibling, so that doesn't necessarily mean parents, but it's definitely someone who's in their life. And I would almost suggest that it would probably be even higher if a hundred percent of the students took it. Because we kind of find that a lot of the students who aren't coming to school every day, it's because they're dealing with other stuff going on.
Well, the other quick point I wanted to make is that it's almost the exact same number as the number of children.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of information slides we could like share with you. Maybe I'll share with you. But I just didn't want to miss a couple of things now.
Yes. No, please dump them. As far as the parents, we know that this is, this isn't a school thing that has, like this isn't an issue that a school has to take care of or one particular person in the community. This is, it takes a village to raise teenagers. And all of us, I think, have to kind of increase the conversation and the messages that we're sending out. And we definitely want to make sure that parents have the information or feel comfortable having these conversations. And even starting at a younger age, and that's definitely a goal that we have as well. You know, we don't want people not having the conversations because they don't know what to say.
So kind of looking at the jumping from the drug and alcohol use. Certainly we know that there's a direct connection between drug and alcohol use and mental health concerns. Especially when there's a lack of resources available to folks. And we certainly recognize that in this community, in this area, the number of resources available to families is pretty limited when it comes to mental health support. We had called the Mental Health Center at the beginning of the school year for, just to get a sense of how long it would take to get a student in for an appointment with a psychiatrist. In calling in September, the first available appointment that they had with an adolescent psychiatrist was in December. So if you are a parent and you know that your child's struggling, you're waiting four or five months before you can get an appointment to deal with some of this stuff. So this is tough stuff that families are facing and that our kids ultimately are facing. And I think looking at this data, when we look at, that we'll look at the numbers specifically. But the data at the bottom, I think, is important to recognize as well. This data just includes students who are thinking of self-harm or students who are dealing with what would be considered clinical depression. This, the YRBS doesn't look at anxiety, it doesn't look at ADHD, bipolar disorder or PTSD. And PTSD stands for post-traumatic stress disorder. So some of the kids who are facing at home those issues of poverty and homelessness, drug and alcohol abuse, could be fall into that category of dealing with some post-traumatic stress disorder based on some of the behaviors that they've seen in their community because of that drug and alcohol use. So when we're looking at these numbers, know that it's purely depression that we're looking at. It's not including any of those other significant mental health issues that we see presenting themselves in the guidance office on a daily basis, kids who are struggling with these issues. So when we look at just these numbers, and I think it's important for the community to hear, that almost twenty-one percent of our students have engaged in some sort of self-harm behavior. So whether that's cutting, that's burning, that's. sort of self-harm behavior. So, whether that's cutting, that's burning, that's scratching, it's engaging in some behavior, not to kill themselves, not to commit suicide, but to harm themselves. So, not an intentional, "I want to die," but it's to, "I want to harm myself." 32.6% of our students feel sad, hopeless every day for two or more weeks. That's again, that clinical depression stage. So, that's a third of our students. As you pointed out, Tom, that's over 200 kids walking around this building every day who could meet the diagnosis, who could meet the clinical criteria for a depression. And 16.2% of our students have seriously considered suicide during the past 12 months. 16%. So, when I did that number, that's 106 of our kids who have considered suicide. So, fortunately, we haven't lost 106 kids. So, we're doing something right because we're keeping them alive. But 106 kids are to the point where they're considering ending their own life because of the things that they're dealing with.
Can you remind me really quick what grade this is that you surveyed?
This was taken throughout the whole high school, so it's grades nine to 12. But only 84% parents have to give.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So, we, some parents decided to not allow their kids to take the survey, which, you know, is definitely their right as a parent. And also, just kind of kids being absent. And we also don't force any kid to take the survey who does not want to take it. It's 100% voluntary. You know, we tell them right from the beginning, you can stop to ask, you can stop answering the questions when you want. You can just not answer any of them. So, that kind of accounts for what we're missing.
In this slide here, it says 7.5% of our students have attempted suicide one or more times during the past 12 months. So, again, that's 49 kids have attempted suicide in the past year. And then, a statistic that we didn't put up there was that 2.4% of our kids have attempted suicide or had a suicide attempt in which an injury required, what happened that required medical support. So, 2.5% of our kids. And again, the statistic at the bottom, I think there's a number of reasons why the statistics are a little bit higher for Samborn, but I think one of the biggest ones is the lack of resources in the community and the lack of support. And again, that's, that's a trend across the state of New Hampshire, but we seem to be really struggling with having our kids have access to psychiatrists and psychologists, the counselors. Another area that's looked at is the relationships for students. So, this is a specific area that staff have noticed an increase. And if you look at the data, you can see the spike. This is something that we as a staff have noticed recently, has definitely become problematic with our kids. They're really struggling with having an idea of what a healthy relationship looks like, what they should tolerate in a relationship, and what, how to handle it if a relationship is not healthy. So, 9.6% of our students have experienced physical dating violence. And during the past 12 months, 27.9% have felt that they've been in a relationship where they've been controlled or emotionally hurt by, by their partner. So, again, almost 30% of our kids are in these unhealthy relationships. This, last year, we brought in a presentation to our seniors from last year about dating violence. And before they kind of went off to college, just talking about what do you do if you're in that unhealthy relationship? How do you get support? How do you handle it? How do you get out of it? It was a one-woman play. It was pretty powerful. The woman, the play was about a woman who actually ends up being murdered by her, by her partner. But the woman at the end of the performance talks about what are the resources that are available and how do you get help when you're in that scary situation? And she also talked to the kids to say, you know, what do you do if you see your friend in that kind of a situation? How can you help your friends to get the support that they need? As you've heard, we've talked a lot about our school becoming a trauma-informed school. What that means is that we want our staff to know, how do they talk to kids who are really struggling with these issues? How do you, when a student is struggling with some of these things, they can't focus on math. They can't, okay, pull up your bootstraps and go to math class and do math when they're dealing with being physically, emotionally abused by the person that they're in a relationship with. These numbers here, I think, are really scary, for lack of a better term. 9.1% of our students report they've had, they've experienced a forced sexual intercourse over the course of their lifetime. 9% of our kids have been, essentially would be raped as they're walking around our building. Not saying that they were raped in our building, but 9% of our students, I don't want that going on, right? 10% of our students have experienced sexual dating violence. And 13% of our students have seen or heard domestic violence at home. So, when we talk about trauma, this is the trauma that our kids are experiencing. And if you think about a little over 9%, so even if we round that up to 10%, if we have 644 kids in the building, we're talking about 64 kids walking around our building every day who've experienced forced sexual intercourse before they're 17, 18 years old. We're working diligently, as I said, to become a more trauma-informed school. These statistics are just the tip of the iceberg. These are what the kids reported. A lot of kids don't report this because they're afraid, they're embarrassed, they don't know where this data is going to go, they don't know how it's going to be used. So, my guess, although Amanda said that some of this might be somebody, "Oh, I'm just not going to take this serious," I would even venture to guess that there's probably a few more out there who didn't answer this question because they were embarrassed.
When you look at like our survey results that you get back, you can actually see the questions, like they say, you know, like 648 students answered, and then you can see how many students answered each question. And the more kind of personal that the questions got, the less students that have answered it.
To say that our kids are stressed, absolutely. Our kids are coming to school and they're juggling a lot, they're trying to balance a lot, they're trying to manage a lot. And we're also expecting them to go to math and science and social studies and English and pass the SATs and get into Harvard and do a lot of really good things. So, they're definitely dealing with a lot. And as I said, we didn't want to bring this data to the community, to bring everybody down and say that horrible things are happening here. We just want people to be aware so that we can all work together to kind of help solve this. So, this all being said, we are doing some good things here in the school to kind of help our kids, so.
So, this is just a few of the things that we have been doing. One thing is we provide the SOS signs of suicide program to all the 7th and 9th grade students. So, this includes lesson plans around the signs and symptoms, skills on how to help a friend that they may be worried about, a screening for students to kind of self-assess, and we hand out resource sheets. And we also check in with a good portion of the students just to kind of say like, "What did you think? Are you struggling? Who can you kind of reach out to? What can we help you do?" And I, I feel like it's been very successful. We've been doing it for four or five years now. And I think that it's, we've been able to identify a lot of kids that way and just form connections or help them form connections with who they need to. We provide additional curriculum throughout the other years around mental health, substance use and resources through the wellness curriculum. But students all have to do wellness in 9th grade and then they have to do it again in either 10th, 11th or 12th grade. We've been providing ongoing training to staff around how to recognize signs of mental illness and substance use and how they can best support them in the school environment. So, not asking the teachers to be counselors by any means, but just like, these teachers care about the students and they see them every day, all day. And that can kind of be a lot too. So, we want them to have the resources that they need and know who to kind of direct students to, or if so-and-so is having such a difficult time in class today, like maybe being able to recognize why that is and how they could best kind of support them to move through. Trainings include things such as the SOS gatekeeper training. We brought in someone to do a, a trauma prevention training after we had lost a couple of students in the community. We brought in a couple of trains around the trauma-sensitive schools, around how to implement mindfulness, around the emerging issues in substance use and what to look for, signs and symptoms. We also do a lot of universal prevention strategies such as school-wide assemblies and speakers on mental health and substance use, Red Ribbon Week, Alcohol Awareness Month, Suicide Prevention Week, sharing newsletters and information on trends and concerns. We work closely with community coalitions and organizations such as SOROC, Seacoast Mental Health Center for Life Management in Austin 17th House. And those are just a few of them. Part of my role as a student assistance counselor is not only to work with the students here, but also kind of be a liaison to the community in bringing in resources or referring out. So, I'm actually on the steering committee as well as the executive committee for SOROC, where I help host trainings for parents or I bring in the resources. And there's about, maybe like 12 of us that consistently meet, but then there's a little larger community of SOROC as well. And something to kind of say for the Seacoast Mental Health and the Center for Life Management, when we had that phone call with them at the beginning of the year, when they told us that the waitlist was that long and we were really struggling finding someone for our students, we kind of said, "You know, we have a need here. If you come across another counselor, if you could maybe make it so that they could come here and help with some of those barriers that kids are having, like transportation or parents working or just everyone having a lot on their plate." And they were actually, they hired a new counselor this year and they were like, "Okay, you got it." So, for one day a week, we have a counselor from Seacoast Mental Health and we have a counselor from Center for Life Management who, if their parents, you know, go through the whole intake process and everything like that, they do their confidential counseling here, which has allowed more kids to access these services that they need and kind of go around some of those barriers. Yes, yes, it is insurance dependent. Nope, we're just providing a space. Right. And they only accept, you know, certain insurances and their caseload is still limited as to what they can take, but it's at least helped with, you know, a portion of our students. We implement the project success model in the curriculum for the student assistance work that I do. We partner and do parent trainings and learning opportunities for the community. And we have student clubs and activities that focus on school engagement, culture and health, such as the Leo Club and the Life of a Student, as well as National Honor Society Key Club. We have a lot of clubs here and try to engage as many kids as we possibly can.
Just in addition to what Seacoast Mental Health Center and the Center for Life Management provide, they have a couple of programs. One is called the Renew Program, which is through Seacoast Mental Health Center. And the, a similar program through Center for Life Management is the Journeys Program. The reason we have two mental health centers is because of the three towns. We're in, we're part of two catchment areas. So, we have to work with both the mental health centers. So, two of our towns access Seacoast Mental Health Center and one of our towns accesses the Center for Life Management. So, we're lucky we get to work with two different systems. But they bring in program, the Renew Program and the Journeys Program, our caseworkers from those organizations who will take the students' goals that they're working on with their therapist and then implement the goals in the community. So, for a student maybe who's really struggling with that depression and maybe leaving their house or in anxiety and leaving their house, they'll take the goal of the, the, being able to decrease that phobia of going out of their home and going into the community. And they'll work with them and maybe take them to a Dunkin' Donuts or to a McDonald's to just kind of be used to doing some of those activities that the therapist is working on in the office out in the community. So, those are, it's great that our students have access to that because that's not things that we can do because we're school providers or that the therapist does the therapy work in the office. And then they actually have somebody who's coming to our schools, who's picking our students up for all these appointments and taking them to implement the skills that they're learning from the school worker and from their therapist. So, I think we're pretty lucky to be able to work with them on both of those programs as well. And obviously, we know we need to keep moving forward. There's a lot of things that we want to implement in the future. So, we need to work on, 50% of our kids are feeling like they're not engaged, that they're not connected, so, in the community. So, we need to help engage and we need to find ways to connect with them. I think we're doing, we're doing a good job, but certainly if 50% are saying that they're not, then we definitely need to increase that. The school counseling team is working, and that's the district team, is working on increasing some advisory activities. And through our advisory program, the advisors will work, it's another adult in the building who can work on developing those relationship skills, but also implementing a curriculum around mental health and coping skills and healthy relationships. I heard Pam, you were talking about one of the things that folks were saying is the soft skills. So, that empathy building, that's one of our lesson plans that we're going to be asking our advisors to kind of implement with the kids next year, is how do you connect with other people? Continuing to look at best practice, at how we can manage discipline and make, but make it meaningful, make it meaningful. The last bullet point that I have on there is Ross Green, Dr. Ross Green is coming in at the end of the year to talk with our staff. And one of the things that he really focuses on is helping students to identify what are the lagging skills that they have. So, if they're always struggling with a certain situation, we can't continue to discipline and consequence them because clearly they're not, they don't have the skill to do that. They don't want to get in trouble. So, we have to teach them that skill. So, we work with them on a Plan A, a Plan B, a Plan C. If we, we get through all 26 letters and we go into the Greek alphabet, because we need to come up with plans to help these kids learn what skills that, learn the skills that they need in order to be successful. We're continuing to look at how we can identify and access and refer for mental health concerns. We're looking at standardizing all of our policies across the district so that we can continue to seek consultation with other folks and continue to get the best supports for kids that we can. We could obviously continue to follow the latest research trends and implement prevention strategies, especially on marijuana and vaping. We just had a big regional meeting around vaping so that all schools could kind of talk about best practice in their policies and how we can increase our response to that. We're partnering with Haven, which is the largest violence prevention and support service agency in New Hampshire, to bring a trauma awareness program to our student leaders in the fall. So, we're training our adults in the building, but we're also training our student leaders to be able to recognize when their peers are struggling and what can they as students do? What can they do to change the culture? They're the, they're the ones who are right in the trenches, hearing when kids are saying things that are making them worried. Kids come to us now a lot with fears and concerns for their friends and things that they're worried about happening. But we need more and more kids to be able to do that and to have the skills and feel comfortable to be able to do that. And we're developing a curriculum for the seniors on how to access mental health supports after they leave high school. We do a great job of having our kids know what they need to do when they're here in high school with us. But once they turn 18, those of you who have 18-year-olds, I don't know if you've experienced this yet, but you can't even call their dentist. So, we need to teach them on how to call their dentist and how to set up those doctor's appointments and how to figure out the, the health insurance system because they don't know how to do that. And then, as I said, we're having a professional development day where Dr. Ross Green is coming in to work with all of our staff and teach us how do we help kids to identify what are those lagging skills and how can we help them to learn those skills. So, that's a lot of information, pretty overwhelming. We've had a long time to digest it. Well, not super long, a couple of weeks. I've just thrown a lot at all of you. Are there any questions, thoughts, concerns? Everybody want to adopt extra kids and help keep them safe? Is that how we sometimes are?
I just wanted to say one thing. We certainly, one thing we could do is if the board has questions or if you want to do a discussion, is to comment, you know, me and then maybe you can come back.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that would be wonderful if they have questions. If they don't, I want to acknowledge, a lot of folks don't know that I'm a guidance counselor. And I can't tell you enough what an amazing job the guidance department in this school has. It is absolutely incredible. And that's kudos to you and your leadership and to your team.
Thank you.
I walk through the guidance office twice a day, but I also kind of just miss the guidance office in the Bible there. And I can't tell you how many students are there. They feel safe. They feel like there's a place where they can connect with someone. And it's not what they say, it's just the way they're, they are. And so, I just wanted to thank you for all of your hard work and I appreciate the communication together because it helps us to dream that our struggles with academics have a huge social and emotional degree.
Absolutely. And if, if nothing else, that's, it's, it's not just, it's not just the academics that the kids are struggling with, it's a lot of the other stuff that's playing into it.
I would like to go off the board again and go to eight and three, because we have some auditors here. And although they, being business people start around 10, 11, whereas our people start at six, we'll still, we'll still let them come in if it's all right with the board members.
Thank you, Peter, for moving the agenda. And I would like to welcome Jen Dorr and Ori Prober from Dashon Pickard. Do I say it right? I always have a hard time pronouncing that, that firm name. They are, were the organization that provides our audit. So, we're very fortunate to have them kind of do that work for us. And I am very appreciative of you joining us at the finance committee meeting, first early, so we can give a more detailed overview of the audit. And tonight, to give a brief summary of the audit. It's my understanding that in the past, the audit might not have been regularly presented to the board. I'm always in favor of sharing that information and I'm resound to speak directly to the board. The audit is a very important document and provides some independent review of the position of the district. And I'd like And I think it's probably going to push on the team directly from the post that provide that review and all that. With that being said, thank you.
Thanks for having us. We always enjoy coming out to the board. Interested in the calls, but not, you know, for now, we don't get much control over it. So it's nice to be here. Um we've been working on the audit here. I've been here, we've been trying to figure out, we think, the last four or five years, we've done the audit out here. Tori and myself have been working with you. We've been involved. I'm not going to go into all the detail of this very long and extreme report. I just want to give an overview of what we do do as the auditors. A lot of people think it's just numbers. Not necessarily. We look at a lot of the procedures and the control, see what's placed within the district, the CEA, still working, it should be, or the requirements for improvement. You know, obviously, you want to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, that there's a lot of checks and balances in place to make sure that the policy is a day color. So that's sort of where we start. We do some overall testing of what is supposed to be happening is not happening. And then we will go through and do some random testing of individual transactions, payroll, kinds of things like all those things. This particular year, we looked at a lot of payroll transactions, just we do it on a daily basis. And we had no internal control findings, which obviously is a challenge at the end of the day. There were, with the efficiency, there were material inconsistencies, too bad, you know, words that are covered out there. We received an unmodified opinion, which is, that's depending on the time received. It was anything with a pretty good time, we say this, but it's been stated. We can't guarantee anything a hundred percent. We've been a month to be here. But what we do is say that you're a friend to the community. We all do a lot of, do a lot of testing, which is because you receive a lot of federal grants, still required by the federal government to be testing on grants and financial programs, there's a very, we have to follow and see what they mark. So yeah, so we do federal testing as well. That's again additional because you have a significant amount of federal money. There were no findings there. There were no compliance with findings and any of the requirements that we had to test there, which is good news. We have to submit an audit report to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse at the federal level so that they know that the audit was performed with all the procedures that needed to be done. Like I said, I won't go into any detail if anybody has any specific questions on anything in the audit report. I'm happy to answer them, but we would be here for a while if I wanted to go through all of it. Two of the other documents, one is just a governance letter that says basically what our requirements were, what you provided to us, that there were no disagreements, if there was any material audit entries, what those might be. Again, it's, it's pretty standard and boilerplate. If there was new standards adopted, that type of thing. And then the last letter that we have is just, we call it a management recommendation letter. It's not required. It's just the things that maybe we found along the way, that are recommendations for improvement. They're not, like I said, they're not internal control findings, there ain't nothing like that. Just areas that we, we always think it's beneficial in the audit process, that if we find things that you could help get tighter controls over or just, you know, just make the process better. We find it to be beneficial to provide those during the audit process as well. Specific questions? I won't bore you with all the notes, so.
She, she does a very good job of that, yeah.
She did a great job. Yeah, well, like I said, we were, talked about it earlier, it was a transition year for, you know, with Michelle coming in and she, she grabbed by the horns and it was, uh, it was a lot for her, but we, we got through it and it was good and we expect next year to go great. We've already got everything scheduled, so. She's got the process ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um we're going to go on to eight, one, and I just had a little discussion with Pam. Eight, two, we're going to put on to the next meeting. Alright, so we're just going to eight, one now, which is policy J I C D.
J I C D is Student Conduct, Discipline, and Due Process. And this policy, uh we currently have is woefully outdated. And the New Hampshire School Board Association provided sample language to us to revise our current policy. And it was reviewed by leadership and the superintendent, and they found the language acceptable. So it's simply that we're not in compliance with state law and we have to revise the policy. Student discipline is an important issue. We need to get this done quickly because this is how we, um, this is the document we rely on when we have students here. And it has to be clear for everyone, parents, students, and everyone. So I hope you can see this. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Oh, you don't. Did it all? Never mind. I see it, but you don't. So I retained our original statement of purpose and statement of policy, going to be sent pretty benign. And we had to strike some language in here that wasn't pretty important to me. And it was important to me. And I struck some information down here. And definitions we had, and replaced it with the definitions provided by the School Board Association. So it's pretty much the same policy, but it's just tightened up so that the language complies with the RSA's. It has, it has been changed and so we need to definitely modify it. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to read through the document. Well, it's different in town. Not sure if anyone else has. So I'm just showing it to you tonight. We're going to revisit this again, but you should look through it a bit for us. We did modify the example language and we nailed it to our district. We added after-school detention and Saturday detention. Because the superintendent wanted that in here.
See what happens.
We added removal, classroom, conduct, cross-application. And we also wanted to add in the fact that if the superintendent is away, there is a someone designated to step in and make decisions for the students. So that would be the direct curriculum, I think, piece of our district. And that was a large line of, we will, so. Because there are times when something happens and the students are available.
Can I comment on that quickly? Um under the process for out-of-school suspension number two, it's the third page of the policy, it will state the superintendent and the director of academics, comma, professional learning, comma, and student affairs. So basically what that says is that Michael and I are splitting these up and dealing with them because there's been quite a few. Um but the board, the legal, Paul, the legal position is that the board has to authorize that other person. I can't delegate. So what I'm going to ask for you all to do is to look this over and that we put this right on the agenda for the twenty-second because the biggest change in this.
Well.
Okay, we'll talk.
Here's my, here's my concern. People, not many people usually go to Fremont meeting.
Alright, we could do it early.
I'd like to have.
Thank you, Peter. That's fine, no problem, Chair Broderick. Um so we want to do this as quickly as possible because there's a huge change. Some of our old policy was rooted in nineteen nineties law. And it actually said that we had to limit suspensions to twenty days, which is not true. And there's no appeal process for a ten-day suspension. If you get a ten-day suspension from a high school principal or the assistant principal, it stands without, without an appeal process. They could appeal the process that was used if they have an issue with the performance of the administrator, just like anyone can come to me with a concern about anything in the district, right? Um but the reality is that the suspension itself would stand. After that, the superintendent and/or the designee, which is essentially the curriculum director, would, would be, um, could be forty-five days. Could be many, many days, depending on the situation. And frankly, we've had some situations where we needed that to be in place and we don't have it right now. And it happened recently. So we, we, my message to the school has been kindly, and it is sincere, and I think the public needs to notice, that I really believe that kids do well if they can. I believe that kids come to school with the best of intentions and they don't want to be the kid that's struggling. But we are not going to have vaping, threatening, or chaos in Sanborn High School or this district at all. And I will not tolerate it, and we're going to have to have policies that make that clear, and we have to follow through with every case consistently so that everyone knows that everyone's being treated the same way. Which is exactly why I wrote the letter that I wrote in my constant contact a couple of weeks ago explaining to parents, tell your kids that if you say you're going to hurt somebody, then we'll be going to the police station. Not to me, not to, we're not doing this. So this, this gives us the correct legally congruent power to do so, so stop talking now. But I just wanted you all to read this if you feel like you need to, but I would like to move this as soon as you feel comfortable, Chair Broderick. I didn't mean to.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
I didn't think of the Fremont meeting.
We don't usually have a meeting after the Fremont meeting because the public don't usually go. We're not set up for a video on that.
Sure.
So as you can see, the language is quite technical. It references the RSA's that relate to discipline and that needs to be added for the disservice protection and to have a clear understanding of what the rules are here. At the same time, we're going to have to repeal policy J K because that's inconsistent with the RSA one ninety-three thirteen and the Ed Code for three seventeen. So this would replace, we can appeal J K, replace the current policy. Please take a look at it.
I'm going to make one comment. Please take a look at the Saturday detention that's been at the C chain. Also, it may incur some costs that a couple of years here, if it doesn't pass us. Saturday detention is different, we'll discuss that then, but I would like to make sure you pay attention to that. I would expect this spirited discussion among us, perhaps more.
Well, I also want to mention that it makes it an option, not a requirement. Right? So Saturday detention or after-school detention are two options. We may choose as a, as a team not to implement Saturday detention, but I like having lots of tools into the campaign.
Are you, have you got enough research and thinking about this to tell us why Saturday detention?
I, I'd like to talk about it then because I, we have some time constraints tonight. I will tell you, that came from my suggestion to discuss it, whether it pass or not, that's up to you, but I'd like to discuss it. Okay.
I just mentioned the other one.
Yeah. Well, I, I just, I'm looking at time.
Yeah. DCE, the Administrative Staff Recruiting, Staff Hiring, first read, we're going to table that for tonight due to time constraints. But I will forward you a draft to look at. It's a pretty big topic to handle. If you don't mind taking a look at it for the next meeting or for the future.
Okay, um eight, oh, that, that's, we've done. Alright, um it's just kind of a housework that here, but the SRA negotiation. I have two letters here. I'll read the first one. The second one's the same, it's just one change. Uh this is from Evan Sizowski from the President, SRA, Sanborn Regional School Association. This letter is to inform you that the Sanborn Regional Education Association, an affiliate of the NEA New Hampshire, desires to bargain a master contract for the professional staff, Unit One, for the contract year beginning twenty nineteen. This notification is in accordance with the requirements of RSA two seventy-three dash A colon three. I have the second one because this is both contracts for up this year. The only difference is it says support staff, Unit Two. Alright, um I have appointed two people to negotiate. We can discuss whether it should be more, less, or if you want to talk to them as they run, that's fine, because I've had some inquiries. I chose one from each town. I did reach out to another person, but due to time restraints and work restraints, didn't feel that there would be a fit because you've got two contracts this year. And I will tell you, I know in the past, not only do they spend a lot of hours in, I mean phenomenal hours in, sometimes they go to the wee hours in the morning. And I do know another person I had considered is going to be exceptionally busy this summer because you've given some extra work. Which is why I kind of made that decision, like, holy macrum, I can't bury the people. So I've got one from each town. Also, we've got at least five members from our side in the, on the negotiation team, at least. They will probably have five on their side of the negotiating team. So we're already up to ten, you know, how many agents can fit in the head of a pin? And the bottom line is whatever they decide has to come to the full board anyway. So, alright, so I will, I don't know if you have copies, but if you would like these copies, you put in the minutes you can. Okay, so that takes care of that one. Okay. Oh, I, I, no, it's a secret.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'll tell you, but then I got to kill you. They both agree.
That's probably not the best thing to say.
Jim, Jim from Newton and Larry from Kingston. So they're the, they're the two guys. Yes, I've got a, I think I've got a nickel in my pocket for each of you. I'll put out a petty cash slip later. Okay, I think you're up on the greenhouse.
Oh, I just wanted to let everyone know that I'd had a very good conversation with Mr. Stack and we had a, a long conversation and decided to propose to the board that we table the greenhouse until the NESDEC study is done and we have a clear plan moving forward facilities in the district. If the board is concerned about the location of the greenhouse, he said that they, you know, it could be placed somewhere toward the end of the Hopper instead of the other location. And I just said, you know, I don't think that's really the whole problem at this point. I think that the, tell me if I'm wrong, as a board, you know, the, the concern is just making a decision when we don't really know what's going to happen with our overall facilities, make sure we pay a, a fair sum of money for a really powerful study that should help us to start the process of long-term planning. So if everyone's okay with that, I think that would be the.
If we don't know where we're going, we don't want to.
Right, so we want to slow it down a little bit.
Okay, now, the next meeting will be at the Fremont Elles School, in the library. That, I don't have it here, so. I know, I, yeah, okay, I, twenty seconds, what time is it?
Six to nine.
Six, okay, six o'clock, alright. It'll be hosted by the.
So it says on here that it's Wednesday, May twenty-second, but May twenty-second is Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. It's Tuesday, Tuesday, May twenty-second.
That's why I was on. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, nice cap.
If we need to meet prior to that, I will send out a message. I don't think there's anything in the Hopper, but anything can happen. We do have a couple of things on the agenda now. We've got your, your, your policy. Something else that I.
The second read for eight, nine, one.
Yes, but there was something else I know I brought up earlier, but.
Yep, thank you, Pam. And I'll be presenting on the next agenda my findings of my entry plan work. That's the first meeting of June, the entry plan work, and then we can talk about board rules. And we also will have at least a relatively solid preliminary conversation about the definition of successful student. We just want to do that carefully because it had really good feedback and it was thirteen hundred pages to process of comments. So we just want to take that, you know, we had a great conversation tonight, but we'll bring you something for the next meeting. Provided that our new chair is comfortable with that.
Do what you tell me to do anyway. No. Like I'm that kind of person, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, my personality, I just do whatever anybody else says. Okay, so you've got those things for the agenda.
Yep.
Anything else we want to discuss? We do have a couple of non-public issues. Anything else the board wants to bring up before we go? Okay, so that concludes the public portion of the meeting. We do have, yeah, here it is here, under RSA ninety-one dash three colon, I'm sorry, ninety-one dash A colon three two C, we'll be going into non-public. Larry?
Yes, but let me do that for you better way.
Okay.
So we stay out of the comments.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we go into non-public session according to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two C.
Second, anybody? Ah, beautiful, I love it. Okay, any discussion? No. Vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Cory? I think we lost Cory.
He said yes.
Oh, yeah, so he has.
Oh, there you are. Okay, thank you, Cory. Okay. Okay.